Planning Commission meeting Wednesday, January 15th. Get started here at 6:33. And we'll start with our roll call attendance.
Newman.
Here.
Azar.
Here.
Chair Foster.
Here.
Showalter.
Here.
Razem.
Here.
And Subakatani.
Here.
We have heard from Commissioner Moschelli that he will not be able to join us this evening and that Councilman Polka will be late.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilman Polka and Commissioner Moschelli.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next approval of the agenda this evening. We have no items of business, but a couple discussion items. Any suggested? And it's
I move to approve the agenda, January 15th is printed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next we have approval of the minutes, consideration of approval of the December 18th, 2024 meeting minutes.
I move to approve the minutes provided for December 18th, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next we have a call to audience. If anyone from the audience would like to come up and speak to the council, now would be the time. Thank you, welcome.
Good evening, my name is Phil Lombard, I live here in the city. I wanted to start off by thanking you folks for taking your time, you're not paid to do this, and just trying to keep up with city meetings is tough. I've tried, I've watched a lot of videos recently. And I usually skip a lot of them, and I usually fast forward and can go one and a half times the speed. So anyway, I know you guys spend a lot of time doing this kind of stuff, so I appreciate that. Now here's the other half of what I want to say. I'm disappointed in how well or how not well the city, the planning commission is part of it, of course, did recently with this zoning Ferndale. And I'm speaking primarily of the lack of information for residents. I see a lot of goals and what they'd like to say and what they'd like to be, but I see very little comparisons, quantifications, anything kind, anything like that. So I'm talking about numbers. First off, numbers for residents. Recently saw a developer speak in front of people, and the one developer spoke, and then several, a few city residents spoke. One person said she did a petition, so she's speaking for 58 people. I understand why you don't, you can't believe all that, you can't believe me. But the quantification I'm looking at as resident is one developer, X number of city residents don't want to see single-family houses changed from R1 single-family houses to now up to three or four apartment buildings. That's what I'm talking about, this is, this is all just about that, not all, but part of it. I didn't see anything like that, so I'd like to know how many residents it takes for somebody who doesn't live in the city to want something to happen. I don't know if that, there is the right number in the city who can overrule a planning commission or a single developer. So that's one point of quantification. Next point of quantification, there are very little graphics and information for the city on population density, because we need more. You could have used, for example, from city, from ZipApp, let's say the 100 highest population density cities in Michigan, Ferndale's number 11. At, right around 5,000. That could have been in there, and then say, no, doggone it, we don't want 5,000 residents per square mile, we want 6,000, that's the number we're looking for. No, there was nothing like that done. And I'm being a little pedantic with that, I, I'm not trying to say 6,000 is the right number, I'm not sure what number it is. But once again, there's a little comparison for the city residents to know. So Ferndale's 11th in the state out of 100 most dense cities. You could have shown census blocks, there are seven census blocks in, in the city, 1730 through 1736, and I know I'm preaching to the choir here, you guys know all this probably because you're on the planning commission. And the density ranges from 45, or 4,126 people in the census tract that's southwest adjacent to Royal Oak Township. And goes up to as high as census tract 1731, that density is just over 7,100 people per square mile. And that's the, the tract that's north of nine, just east of Woodward. None of this kind of information was put out. You know, there was all kinds of things could be done like this to compare what is happening now, what you'd like to see happen, what are the residents willing to live with. You guys are not doing a good job for the student, the students, I'm sorry, for the residents of Ferndale to help make decisions. And to help, how do we compare with other folks? That would have been, I think, a key thing for you, and of course, and I'll yell at the city council when that happens, but those kind of informations should be out there, and I'm sorry to see it wasn't. And I imagine there are tons more things that could be done with graphical information systems about how we, how we are now and how we'd like to be, but it's not done. And I just don't think that's the best way to operate. That's all, thanks, bye.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi, welcome. My name is Becky Hammond, Phil's my husband. We feel the same way about some of these things, so I feel like a lot of residents here, the rezoning really blindsided me. The national elections that just happened blindsided me, but I feel like this rezoning was worse. We've lived here since 1986, we've been homeowners here since 1989. We raised our son here, he went all through Ferndale High School here. We love our city, we love it the way it is, understanding that change is inevitable and that we all have to face some of this. To be, to watch videos after all this happened, to hear a developer come into this meeting and say, well, change is uncomfortable, and that this person is not a Ferndale resident, not a taxpayer, didn't send their kid to school here, almost certainly lives in R1 zoning somewhere in a city where he can absolutely count on that remaining the same, and him feeling safe and secure in a world of constant change, in a nation of constant change, we have political change, we have climate change, we all have personal changes in our lives. And so what we would like is something that seems pretty reasonable, is for our city that we love the way it is, and we've stayed here because it is what we love, to stay as much the same as possible, again, understanding that some change is inevitable, we all face this. We're hearing a lot about our feelings as this has happened, that we fear this. I haven't heard anybody talk about fearing this. I, I, we feel a lot of different ways about this, aghast, angry. I, I don't feel that anyone fears this, yes, change is uncomfortable, we all fear, feel this. But there's a sort of unspoken idea that if we love Ferndale and we stay here, some of our family members, we've wanted to move up north for so long that people actually laugh when we bring it up. But we stay because we love our city and we love our neighborhood so much, and it's so hard to leave. There really seems to be an idea that if we don't let developers tell us what the right amount of change is for us, that something is wrong with us, and that if we've stayed here for decades because we love this city, there's something wrong with this, that we're stagnating or flatlined, these words come up. I think it ought to be more acceptable to love your city and to be able to say this. Phil talked about density, this, this idea came up for me, I don't know urban planning terms, and when some changes came potentially into our neighborhood, I believe in 2018, I had never heard this term before, and I don't think that I knew, I don't think that I knew that you could sort of Google this and find this easily. I thought you sort of had to be an urban planner or understand this world to be able to find terminology like this, so I was pretty, as this has come up over the years, I was pretty shocked to find that even though we keep hearing that Ferndale needs more density, we need to achieve density, that our population density is actually more than twice the national urban average, and that parts of Ferndale are even higher than that, approaching three times the national urban average. Again, I'm a classical musician, so I don't, these, this is not my field. But also looking into this further, and this is all pretty recent to me, that psychological density is a stressor. So if you're adding more people into neighborhoods, this can be something detrimental to our lives. It can cause a rise in stress hormones, all people handle this differently, but this is something to take into account that I haven't heard brought up yet. This, this seems to mostly benefit, I, this seems to mostly benefit a handful of developers who don't live here, who see us as a cash cow, that's the world we live in. But other principles get brought into this that don't really seem to have anything to do with what these developers want. So racism comes up, and density as a positive comes up. There's a sort of conflating of zoning and redlining. People believe this because I feel like the people here really trust city officials, we trust our government, we hear the term Ferndale family a lot. But I really feel like all the people who, who call themselves developers and it's such a positive word, all they want is to make money. But we're, we're a city, you know, we're communities, we're neighborhoods. We really like things the way they are. It's a feeling of safety and security in a world where an awful lot is changing. We're having a hard time with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing that no others are here, I'm gonna end the call to council, and we don't have zoning ordinance on our agenda for this evening, but we also have a light agenda, and I would definitely like to just touch on a few points that were made. Starting off with, I, I agree that it can be quite difficult to keep up with all the meetings and all that information. Are we on camera right now? Am I over at least on the TV? Yeah, I'm just saying, why, why are we being
Asking, they're asking why are we on this camera?
Just not used to it, I just noticed that, but. Sorry, I was distracted.
Usually, usually what's on here is what's on here.
Here we go, thank you. All right, I apologize for the distraction. It can be very difficult to keep up, I, I feel the same way quite often, and and we agree that it's quite difficult to educate the public on what's going on. The zoning ordinance particularly was an 18-month process, and so a lot of the information was spread out over time. And the zoning ordinance is typically built off of the master plan, which is a much more publicly, publicly engaged process. And as part of that, there's a lot more of the data that you can find as part of that process. It's, it also lives within the master plan, there's a lot of the information on specific demographics and population characteristics, et cetera. And then the zoning ordinance is built off of that. It is, of course, over a long period, longer period of time that both of those plans, the plan and the ordinance are built. But I was actually just looking this last, yesterday for some reason, that in the early stages at the steering committee, after a few months of public engagement on the zoning ordinance, we did get, we did compile information after we had a housing-specific workshop for the zoning ordinance. And I believe this would have been then in 2023, at the onset of the zoning ordinance process. We did have a housing workshop, and we also had an online forum where, and we, as part of this process, submitted, or like, sent out 500 postcards to random citizens throughout the area, and we were posting postcards. There's, there was information to send people online to provide their feedback. And we did have percentages of respondents of who identified whether they're comfortable with single-family duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes. And the quadplexes being the lowest in favor of, at 53%, but still a majority. And the triplexes, I'm not remembering the percentage there, but it's, I think in the 60s, and duplexes, I believe was overwhelming, like 70 or 80%, and obviously people are in favor of single-family homes. And so we did do, we did, there was part of this, as part of the process. I think that it's difficult to show all of that at the end, and to identify at the final meetings, you can't give a comprehensive overview of all that information.
Can I ask why 500 postcards were sent in a city with a population of 19,000 to 20,000?
I think that was a statistically significant portion of the population to provide feedback, and I think because of city constraints for, in terms of resources.
Is there a reason why it was never called rezoning, which technically and by definition is what it is?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna have a back and forth here, I mean, this isn't as part of our agenda, but I, I do want to make sure that I'm addressing the issues that you guys brought up.
Okay, it's not gonna be back and forth, I'd just like to add before I step back that we get the newsletter and we read it, I never saw rezoning. I would see in two issues of the newsletter, a tiny blurb near the end, I think the Dog Park and the Princess Dance got more space in the newsletter than rezoning, which I still have never seen anywhere.
Because we haven't rezoned anything yet, well.
I thought it was voted.
I guess, yes, it is rezoned. But because it's a zoning ordinance amendment, that's just typically how it's identified, I guess.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. I mean, because, so when we rezone a specific property, I guess this is where I was getting confused just now. We, we notice for that area and for the surrounding 500 feet of, of residents, for the specific rezoning, and the state has different a different process that's mandated by the state's Zoning Enabling Act for how you identify a specific number of rezonings. So we did do the thorough process of, we went above and beyond what the state requires in terms of identifying the process for the zoning ordinance and the public announcements of having our multiple meetings, et cetera. And I think that's good feedback, because I think if people hear zoning ordinance update, they might not know what that means, and they might be more familiar with the terminology of rezoning. So I think that's good feedback that we can consider in our future communications for the city. And so I'll have Kyle note that to provide to the communications staff of the city. Because you're right, we didn't identify it that way. To the, some of the other points, I, I think you both referenced like a specific developer, and I'm not sure exactly which meaning you're referencing, but we certainly are not favoring developers' opinions over anyone else's, more so that we're caring about the residents and the, I mean, that's our top priority is to make sure that we're listening to the residents and doing this for the residents. The, even though properties may have additional options for development currently, like after the zoning ordinance update, it's actually at the resident's choice of what you can do, we're not mandating that you change anything on the zoning. It's just that you now have options as a resident to what you would like to do with your own property. And then to this density point, I think you can, I think, you know, being 11th in the state, that's, that's an obvious, I haven't, I didn't actually know that, but clearly states that, you know, that we are probably on the higher density. I would say that since we are an entering suburb that is completely built out, and we don't have a lot of open space, we have obviously some parks and some areas like schools and whatnot that are less dense, but not a lot of undeveloped land in total. So that certainly plays a part in that, but I do know that our, at our highest density was in 1960 or around then, and we had 31,000 residents, and we're currently at 19,000. So we're actually only at 63% of our density that we were once in the city of Ferndale at our, our prime time back in the day. So I just want to make that point about density. And I think I kinda hit some of the points. I do appreciate the feedback and that you guys came here. I know, as you said, it can be difficult, and I think that's also a really great agenda to come to because we do have some time to discuss it, so I don't know if anyone else had anything to respond to?
Lot to say, but I don't want to really speak out of turn, being so new, but you know, when a developer comes here and wants to invest in our community, we do our best to make sure that it fits with, you know, what, what we have going on here. We're like, I think everybody up here knows we have a special city, and, and we want to keep it that way too, as far as I'm concerned, that's why I'm here, so.
And we, we're, we all serve on this committee, on this committee because we love the city and we don't, and we have nothing to really, we have no incentive to, like, no, there's no personal incentive, no, to out-tow the developers. And we, we're, we're, we we ultimately do what's best for the city, and I, I do know that the city population is, I was just looking at the Ferndale city population, in 1960 it was 31,000, 1970 it was 30,000. And that, between 19, and then in 1980 and 1990, when you guys moved in, it was 25,000, and right now we're at just over 19,000, so, and it's, and it's projected to keep declining as well for, by a few hundred people in the next few years as well, so.
Unfortunately, household size continues to
Windle.
Reduce, and so that puts a strain on our on our community, just overall, just having less folks, so I think that is, that's an unfortunate thing that we're kind of having to deal with everywhere, but bigger houses and less people. So, since we are recorded, for the folks at home, this question, if that we're allowing for more units on a property, does that lead to lower household sizes, or lower property sizes, unit size, the household size? And I think that the market is really what is leading anything, and so, I mean, if it, if someone sells their house to a developer and they develop it into a triplex or a quadplex, I mean, they're doing it based on what the market is demanding. And what we've seen is that folks, you know, are, we're tending towards smaller household sizes across the country, and I think particularly in Ferndale. And I don't think that's I think the changes is more of a reflection of the market versus what we're going, we're not pushing it in any way, I don't believe by that.
Yeah, so the chair, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, you may have the same point, also that the, just a note that the triplex, a quadplex in R1 is a special land use. So it has a separate set of requirements than doing a duplex or a single-family house on the property with much higher level of like engineering investment from the point of a developer or from a homeowner from developing their own property into a quadplex. So it's not going to be something that someone can just knock down a single-family home and like build a quadplex out to property lines, it will be, I think, fairly difficult with some of the dimensions of lots in Ferndale for them to be quadplexes. Three units and an accessory dwelling unit may be more reasonable, but they'll still have, I guess, just, just to say that it's not something that could happen like overnight, that a whole block would become quadplexes, it would be very difficult.
Good chair, if I could add on to what the chair was, was saying is, we find that looking at generationally, I know with my parents, and I want to make no assumptions, you know, on you, but my parents' generation bought a home, raised a family, stayed in that home for decades. And, you know, many times they passed away in those homes. This generation is much more fluid's not the word, but much more mobile, they're, many of them are not interested in owning homes, they're looking at renting homes or renting apartments. They want the flexibility to be able to be mobile if they change a job. You know, they want to be able to move from one community to another easily, so in, in my mind, I'm preparing, I'm trying to help prepare Ferndale for the next generations of what they're looking for. Without trying to compromise the current generations that are living in Ferndale. So, I mean, that, that's from my perspective. I know for myself, I, you know, I live in a home, but I know in the next 10 years, I'm probably gonna be moving out into either a condo or an apartment, something where I don't have to maintain the property, because living by myself, I, it's getting harder and harder on me as I get older to manage a house. And I think a lot of people, I'm Gen X, I think a lot of people in my generation who are single are looking at the same thing. I think, again, millennials and, and Gen X, or Gen Z just have a different mindset toward residency in a, in a community.
I think the point is that it allows for more options, but really, and so to Commissioner Subakatani's comment, is that we still have these form-based regulations, that these are still meant to look and fit the character of Ferndale, because all, all of us moved here because we like Ferndale, and that's what we want to maintain. We want to maintain the sense of community, we want to maintain the sense of the character of our neighborhoods, I, I think, and we, as we've all changed, said that, you know, change is inevitable, and there is an evolution, because, you know, there are changing habits and market demands. And so keeping up with them, keeping up with, I mean, we've also talked about, you know, climate change and all these other issues that we're trying to, to move forward, and seeing this as an incremental change towards that, and making some, some steps towards benefiting the community overall. So that was, I think where a lot of the changes came from, when I reiterate the point that we had multiple, we had multiple community engagement sessions, there was a lot of public feedback. Very, I mean, all, I only saw residents joining, and we didn't necessarily give the floor to, you know, developers, I know developers come to planning commission meetings often, but we really did make a really big effort to engage the public in these conversations over time, and I know it's hard, and I I think that we can always strive to do a better job of public education, and we talk about that a lot here, actually. But we, we appreciate you coming and providing your feedback, and we'll continue to keep it in mind that we can always do a better job to be open and educate, so thank you. There's no further comments. We will be talking about our objectives for the year, some of that, I think will be around education. And continued updates to the zoning ordinance, it is a living document, something that we want to make sure that we maintain. So, Carl, if you want to introduce the
Yes, thank you, planning commissioners, happy new year. I just wanted to spend a little bit of time discussing any goals and objection, objectives that you may have for this coming year. I notice we didn't do this last year, I think we're in the midst of, you know, the zoning ordinance process. But I'm just looking ahead and trying to see if there are any suggestions or anything that you personally would like to look into for this year. Typically, you know, I'm bringing stuff here and just presenting it, putting it on an agenda, but this is an opportunity, if you have anything that you would like to, I guess, eyeball for the, the coming year. So I do have a few suggestions and a few options. So I do have a few suggestions and a few options, a few things that are like part of requirements for redevelopment-ready communities, but we can kind of fine-tune them to our own ends. But, yeah, that's really all I have for an opening. So be happy to discuss any goals.
Well, I just wanted to start with that we still have some open items from the zoning ordinance update that we'll continue to work through. And I want to kind of make sure that we're on the same page with those. So one being food trucks, also the tree ordinance. And I think, was there one other section I feel like I'm missing?
Those are the two that come to mind. Like you said, it is living documents, so I think we will, in the near future, kind of take a beat and reexamine it and see how it is going with everybody. But definitely the food trucks and the tree ordinance were the two that we talked about as we were closing out the process. I believe the CED director, Roger, has been in contact with some members of the commission to get the food truck discussion started. And then the tree ordinance is actually in draft form. I believe it's going through some of the other channels, you know, city attorney and the ordinance committee.
There was another item regarding lot width that, I'm not sure if we should, that might be something that we could be potentially be more reactive to if we start seeing a lot of lot combinations so that folks can build these, you know, bigger fourplexes. I, I would certainly, at that point, want to take a look at it, but it might also be something that we can kind of proactively look at. We do have a lot minimum, but not a lot maximum in our traditional family zoning, or strike family, traditional neighborhood zoning, or R2. So that was one thing that was on my mind. But I think also, just as we see folks coming, like we've just talked about, is if we start to see a lot of action that, you know, maybe we think is, in effect, that we didn't necessarily want to see from the zoning ordinance, we can always bring up those issues at the time. I don't know. Lot width was one that was on top of mind that I specifically was thinking could potentially be an issue. Any other, is there any ordinance-related goals that anyone has? So my other point I actually had on my list before even, we had called consult was, or called audience, was education. I think that what we've learned over the past few months is that people are feeling in the dark about what's going on. And I think that just generally zoning and planning aren't really understood. And so I don't know how the planning commission is involved in that, but I would be happy to, to spend my time. And it might be, you know, maybe we have a, a group of us that are interested or that can assist the city. And maybe it is, you know, we talked about the newsletter that goes out, that might be an opportunity where we can have maybe a larger blurb. I know it's also a limited publication that we wouldn't be able to put too much in there, but maybe it links to videos or whatever it might be. But there might be some sort of educational campaign that we can put together.
Yeah, and through the chair, we do periodic, you know, educational events. We have the, I'm blanking on the name, but I have a T-shirt of it, where we have the the classes, where we teach all the different departments.
Burn and Learn?
Burn and Learn, thank you. How could I forget such a fun name? So, you know, we do that and we're always looking at ways to expand that and, you know, make the program a little better. I've noticed, you know, I think we've done it twice now and it's kind of, I don't know if it has grown, you know? So it's, it's not always the most exciting stuff, to be honest with you, but it is important stuff to learn. And I think we can consider ways to make it more exciting. I know, I think personally, I think CED did a pretty good job. We had some interesting games that could draw people in and make it a little more interactive, which I think is very helpful. So, you know, maybe that's a little more out of the box than what you were thinking in terms of education, but I absolutely agree. I think that's something we can hit this year.
Yeah, I think the Burn and Learn is a great program. I've participated in myself. Well, we did a mock planning commission where we had Smurf Village and it was a lot of fun. So it was a good way, I think, to learn. And so, and I think it's a really great way to get to know other parts of the community, economic development department as well, like building and code enforcement, et cetera. But I think maybe something that can reach more people, because that is a fairly participatory and time-intensive program, to my understanding.
One of the, just an idea is, I, we need, I know that, like, the way that people consume and get information is way different now than it ever has been, and it's only evolving, going to different forums and stuff like that. It's, people are getting their information more from there and less from traditional outlets. Another thing is, so like some, some more engagement on where the people were, on where members of the community are talking might help get the word out a little bit more. And then also possibly, we have a lot of, one of the things that Ferndale does, does a great job of more, better than most communities, is having a bunch of, is having a bunch of, like, street fairs and doing, like, there's the DIY, there's Pig and Whiskey, there's the, there's now the Cinco de Mayo thing that's, there's just a bunch of, of areas like that. And maybe if, where there's inviting people to engage in, like, a booth over there could be just a way to get the word out a little bit more. But I know that, as someone who's been on the planning commission for 10 years, maybe, 10 years or so, with a little bit of a break, this is my first time ever hearing of Burn and Learn. So that, we're not getting the word out very well on that.
I think, like you said, there are so many different ways to take in information and you really have to, I think, be looking for it to, yeah. So it is, it is so difficult. It makes it more difficult these days.
Yeah. So, for me.
Through the chair, I mean, we have a couple of things that are part of our redevelopment-ready communities. So one is the adoption of bylaws. So that is a goal I would like to set for us. We have a draft that Christine prepared before she left, and it's pretty, pretty well there, I would say. I think we were waiting to finalize everything with the zoning ordinance, just because some of the changes in that can affect the bylaws. So I took a peek at that last week, just to get a sense of it and see how it stands. So that's something I will be bringing forward at some point this year. I, I think, given the way we have our format, perhaps I could bring it at a meeting as a discussion item, then we can review it and make sure we're on the same page and then adopt it at a future meeting. The other thing that RRC actually requires, this is a kind of a unique requirement, is that we hold at least one joint meeting a year. So last year, we did hold a joint meeting with the city council to discuss the zoning ordinance. We also held a joint meeting with Fayak, that's Ferndale Accessibility Inclusion Advisory Commission, just to talk about, you know, their perspective on accessibility issues and what we, as a planning commission, can do to shepherd the city in a better direction for those matters. So I was considering other boards and commissions that we could meet with and do a joint meeting kind of as a way to help us learn more about their perspective and how we can improve things. So some suggestions include the Sustainability Commission, DDA, also Parks and Rec. So these all have, like, pretty active boards. So I don't know if there's any feedback of a particular way we want to go, or if there's one that we want to go after, but I think those are really fun and informative.
My personal opinion is sustainability. And for the bylaws, will we, how are we going to move forward with that adoption?
I'll, I'll bring it as a draft.
To a meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's something that we have to vote and adopt on?
Yes. You know, we, we don't have the bylaws officially, but, I mean, we have been acting, I would say, in accordance with most of what they say anyway. But it is an RRC requirement that we have them formally to call a best practice.
Okay. Do you want us to select the joint meeting now, or is that just something to think about?
It's just something to think about, or just some, like, feedback. I think we can definitely set it as a goal for our, us to meet this year, but if there's specific boards, I mean, I think sustainability is a great choice, for sure. But if there's any other feedback, I'd be happy to take it.
I think some of the feedback we heard, where some people thought that the sustainability portions of the zoning ordinance update didn't go far enough, coming off of our master plan that had a sustainability plan tied to it.
I've heard the same, as I made through the chair, I've heard the same thing, that it, it talked more about environment and not materials. There was nothing in there that talked about sustainability regarding materials.
So, so maybe, like, in the second half of the year, and maybe after we've seen a couple of developments under our new zoning ordinance, it might be nice to go over, like, a case study with the, the Sustainability Committee, just to kind of reflect on our new ordinance, to see if there's things that they, you know, maybe want to look at as we continue to move forward with amending the ordinance, et cetera. Is there anything else from the RRC? Is there anything else that the commission is looking to make a priority in this year?
There is one thing that I've been noticing more and more, just, and as I've been, you know, going down, it's just because I drive down Woodward all the time, but the south side of Woodward is, I don't know if the new ordinance will help us or not, and this is more of just a, throwing an idea out there, but there's a lot of vacant buildings now on the south side of Woodward, like the Rite Aid, the Catholic Church, Tim Hortons, the Emery's going to be gone soon, there's the two nightclubs, there's that, like, Rent a Center place, all those places are just for lease. And I don't know if there's something ordinance-wise that's making it so these buildings aren't being snapped up, or if it's just, just the market doesn't, isn't favorable to them. It could very well be that. I just, but I'm just wondering, is, is there something from an ordinance perspective that you look at it and it's just like, ah, parking minimums, or, or there's something that, that is hiccup?
I, I understand where you're coming from. I don't know if, if we would get any, I mean, if we just had conversations about what we think might be causing it, I'm wondering if we can just contact the property owners and say, hey, we're wondering why this, you know, why Rite Aid hasn't been, you know, occupied. Now, Rite Aid is a unique situation, it's just been recently vacant. Tim Hortons, we know that, you know, a company bought it and they were waiting for, I think, the zoning to be completed, the rezoning or the re...
Something for, can I connect? Updates or something?
Pardon?
Update?
Update, thank you. Was the word I was looking for, the update to the, to zoning. And, and like, the church has just been recently vacated. So those, you know, I, I understand, you know, but there are a number of properties, you're right, that are vacant and have been for quite a while. Aaron's, incidentally, is now occupied. I'm not quite sure what the business is, because it doesn't have a sign, but it looks like it might be like a resale store.
Which building?
The old Aaron's appliance, where it was like a rent, like a Rent a Center.
Yeah, that's true. So there is a, I believe it's a, like, furniture and other resale shop.
I mean, their windows are just, you know, there's a number of shelves in front of the windows with niki and stuff on it. But that's only been recent, like, within the last month. But I, I agree, there are a number of, of places that have been vacant, and maybe it is because people have been waiting for, you know, the update to the zoning to be completed. I understand that is that's what Rosie O'Grady's was waiting on, was for this. But it wouldn't hurt to understand why property owners aren't getting their properties occupied. What are they waiting for?
Will we remove the requirement for two stories downtown?
Sorry?
I think it was modified, but I'm not sure. Shoot, there was something on the tip of my tongue, right before you said that. That's okay.
I'm just waiting for the ordinance. Rosie O'Grady's.
Yeah, I said Rosie O'Grady's. Yeah, I don't know if any other properties were waiting on sale.
Yeah, I mean, I know, the nightclub, I think you mentioned, that's been taken since before I got here.
Never seen it open.
Heard rumors of, like, significant damage, like, water damage or something in the building, that it's like an environmental concern.
Yeah, I think that there's just, I think there's a lot of structural damage because of it, and no one's really interested in it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it used to be Doug's Body Shop, back in the day. Loved it when it was Doug's Body Shop.
So, would that's something that maybe staff could provide us, like, if there has, if you can identify, if there's been, like, a number of ZDRs or development requests for the south Woodward? If you can kind of look at it and give us an idea of what may be happening, or if we want to do some sort of corridor study at some point this year to talk to building owners, and what issues they might be having that might, we might be able to resolve? Probably not. I don't know, some point through the year, I know that you're probably transitioning with the loss of Christine. Anything else that we're wanting to accomplish this year? Moving down to one meeting a month and not having a zoning runs? Anything else on your mind about that, Kyle? Anything you need from us?
No, I think I've, I've got a pretty good list here, you know, like, I didn't want a extremely long list, so I think this is pretty good. So I appreciate this. Thank you.
Because ultimately, you would be the one burden doing the work.
We're all doing the work. It's collaborative.
Yeah, but you have to do the grunt work.
Next on our agenda, we have item 6A, election of officers. And so this year, we have a new officer position, the secretary, as described by Kyle in our prior to our meeting. And so the secretary will not be responsible for creating the minutes, but will have a first look prior to them being posted on the Granicus or whatever service we're...
Yeah. Yeah, through the chair, like, functionally, I see, you know, some of you take notes to varying degrees, but the secretary would not have to take detailed minutes, but it would be more of, I would ask that the secretary keep track of the, like, motions and the votes and who made the, the motion, who made the second, things like that, just to be aware of that. And then when staff prepares the minutes, instead of immediately posting them on the website in draft form, as we typically do, we would send it to the secretary for their okay. I do want to keep in mind that we are required to post the draft minutes within eight days of the meeting, so there is a little bit of a, you know, time constraint with this process.
And would you expect, if the secretary were not able to make it to a meeting, would we have someone stand in, or how does that? Maybe the chair or vice chair can take the place of the... Maybe the chair or vice chair can take the place of the secretary in that?
Yes. I, I think that's perhaps a vice chair.
I mean, we're going to be voting on the positions, but in any sense, I'm always taking notes of who's making the thing, so I can always just assist as well, so.
I can always take better notes if I have to.
All right. Well, with that being said, we have chair, vice chair, and secretary. And we are currently one person shy of our nine-person committee, commission.
I know we haven't, he's not here, but I feel like Moshele might be interested in, at least maybe secretary. Seems like he is interested in having a bigger role, but I'm, yeah, I'm speaking for him right now. But that's all. I don't know if...
Can we nominate someone who's not here?
Not sure.
He just seems very passionate, so.
I think per Robert's rules, we definitely can. The, did you receive any information from him prior to the meeting? He would have seen the agenda.
Yeah, he did not, he just let me know that he couldn't be here. He did not express any interest in any of the positions.
Maybe not then, could be wrong.
Or we could vote him in, and then at the next meeting, if he really doesn't want to, we could do it.
Well, I mean, it's also, does anybody else who is here want the position?
No one here wants it.
Does anyone here want it?
It's a fairly easy position.
I'll do it next year.
I'm writing that down. All right. Well, we don't have to vote on secretary first. We also have chair, vice chair. Obviously, I'm serving in the chair position currently and...
I nominate you for chair.
That was quick.
Do you want to continue your position as chair?
I am willing and able. Second, the nomination. All right. We have a motion by Polika, second by Azar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Vice Chair Shaw Walter is our current vice chair.
I'm willing to keep on the roll, if you guys want to vote for me.
I nominate Commissioner Shaw Walter for vice chair.
Second.
Motion by Polika, second by Newman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Shaw Walter. See, I do always write down the motions and it makes it a little bit more difficult for me to run the meeting. For some reason, I still compelled to do it. All right.
Leaving you on three dots?
No, no.
Just a read receipt. You can probably make the assumption.
Sure. Sam said sure. So I'd like to nominate Sam to be the planning commission secretary.
Support.
A motion by Shaw Walter, support by Polika. All those in favor?
I'm sorry. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Moshele to be...
Friendly amendment to the motion that...
Supporty amendment.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all. Easy enough. Does anyone have any further administrative items? Does anyone have any commission items?
It might be administrative. Sorry, I wasn't quick enough. I've been the liaison to the BZA. I would continue that, but I don't think it needs to be.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I forgot. We do vote on that as well, the BZA liaison.
Yeah, I think that's technically a little more informal, I would say, in the new ordinance. I mean, it technically wasn't a position in the old ordinance either, but it's not a stated position in the, the new ordinance. There's a clause that allows for a member of the planning commission to also be on the BZA.
Oh. And is that part of the charter, not the zoning ordinance, I believe?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, maybe that's why it's, yeah. Well, I don't know. I think we typically do, though.
We definitely have in the past.
Yeah. Are you willing and able to continue your...
But definitely open if somebody else wants to.
Is anyone interested in attending BZA?
I can't.
That was a quick... Seeing none? Are you?
Yeah, I would.
Nominate Commissioner Azar for BZA liaison. Motion by Brayson, support by Polika. All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, thank you for continuing to serve in that capacity. We appreciate it. Hopefully we have some meetings this year. Well, I mean, hopefully not, but... Any other commission items?
Commission item. It's weird. That's more of a Kyle question, but in the new zoning ordinance, I think it was regarding non-conforming structures. We have a new role to play, I believe, where we get to decide if it's like a type A or type B non-conformance?
We did not include that. Our city attorney expressed some serious concerns with that process. I believe other, a small number of communities are doing that, but we were strongly advised to not include that. So we retained our existing non-conformities language, which again is, if you're an existing structure or use that predated the code, you can continue to operate and use that structure, but it cannot be expanded.
Thank you for that.
Is the new ordinance on municode?
We're still working to get it on municode. It is on the city's planning and zoning websites. We have a direct PDF link to it.
Okay, thank you. All right. If nothing else, we will adjourn the planning commission meeting of Wednesday, January 15th at 7:00.